Welcome to the June 1st, 2021 meeting of the Oxford Board of Selectmen. Our first meeting back in the Town Hall in person. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provision in the open meaning law, which is General Law Chapter 38, Section 18. Meetings in the town of Oxford are being held via remote, both remote participation and in-person attendance at Memorial Hall, which is 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass., 2nd floor Conference Room. And I would like to take attendance because we are doing certain amount of remote. So we'll say, Selectmen Triano.
Present.
Selectmen La Blank.
Present.
Selectmen Daniels.
Present.
Selectmen Sad is absent, and I'm Selectman Lamash, also present. Do we have a form? Before we get started, I would ask you to take a moment of silence or prayer for Frederick A. Allen Hull, who passed away Thursday, April 29th this year. He served as a town constable from 1994 to 1995. He was also a member of the Southern Westside County Regional Vocational School District Committee from 1994 to 2000. So if you could remember him for a moment for his great service. Thank you. First item on our agenda is surplus requests, the Assessors' Office and DPW vehicles. The Assessors' Office, we have photos and emails attached of the items. Oh yeah, it's an office printer, says right there. The DPW, they have a F-350, an E-150, and a Ford 1900, and a Crown Victoria. And all these vehicles are also being asked to be labeled as surplus, all members. Sure.
I would make a motion that the board declare the HP LaserJet 5200 DTN printer listed on the attached email from the Assessors' Office, and the F-350, E-150, Ford 1900, and Crown Victoria noted in an email and spreadsheet from Jared Duval, DPW Director, dated May 17, 2021, as surplus.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions or comments? Yes, Selectmen La Blank.
My chair was a little low. Is Mr. Duval here? Oh, Mr. Duval. I have a quick question for you, if you don't mind, Mr. Jeff.
Yes.
Jared, these items that you're, I did read through it. I noticed that they're going to be auctioned. Does this eliminate any of the vehicles that are sitting on the lot next door to the DPW building?
Yes, this is most, if not all, of those vehicles.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. That was my only question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Not hearing none. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. Those items are surplus. Next item on our agenda is donation acceptance at the Senior Center. Laura Wilson has presented, what do we have? We have $100 from Carol White. We have $100 from Joe Bolio, totaling 200. So pleasure to the board.
I'd make the motion that the board accept the donation to the Oxford Senior Center from Carol A. White for $100, and from Joseph G. Bolio Jr. for $100, together totaling $200, in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A, to accept this donation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments or questions? Not hearing, seeing any. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. We thank you very much for those donations. Our next item on our agenda has been canceled. So I'd like to do is to jump right into item M, which is a request to use the bandstand for a wedding ceremony. So we have a request to use the bandstand for a wedding ceremony on June 19th of this year. And the request is made by Yvette Garcia, who is a non-resident, no more than 20 people. And the time would be from 1:15 to 2:20. What would the board like to do?
I'll make a motion that the board vote to approve their request by Yvette Garcia to use the bandstand for a wedding ceremony from 1:15 p.m. to 2:20 p.m. on June 19th.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Not seeing any. Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. They can use it then. So we'll go right to N, the next one, which is a request to use the bandstand at Jazin Park by the House of Destiny Church on August 7, 2021, to hold a worship activity, which will be up to 75 attendees, beginning at 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. We obtain a motion to approve.
I make a motion that the board vote to approve the request by House of Destiny Church to hold the worship activity from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. on August 7, 2021. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Not seeing any. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. They can use that on that date and that time. All right. Next item is a request presented by Mr. Daniels to declare, I believe, June Pride Month. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you want to speak on that at all, Selectmen Daniels?
Sure. Back in the 1970s was the riot against the Stonewall riots. And what that was, was a movement against the discrimination of people's sexual orientation and gender identity. So ever since then, June has been recognized internationally as Pride Month. And I would think it would be great if the town of Oxford could recognize Pride Month via proclamation, basically stating that the town is an ally to the LGBTQ+ community, has a strong commitment to diversity, equity, inclusivity, and has a zero tolerance for discrimination or harassment against age, sex, race, national origin, religion, gender identification, or sexual orientation. Tonight, I'm asking that the board vote on doing a proclamation for the next meeting, and that I would work with the staff on exact wording for the proclamation. So my motion tonight is for the board to recognize June as Pride Month in the town of Oxford.
Second motion.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Not hearing any. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. That's great. Thank you, Selectmen Daniels. Well, we still have time, so I'm going to slide right back to L, which is an outdoor business permit renewal and waiver of fee for the First Congregational Church of Oxford Flea Market, dates of the market are June 5th, August 7th, October 2nd. And the time is 8 a.m. to 2 p.m. at 355 Mason, which is location of the church.
The board like to... Make the motion that the board vote to approve the renewal of the outdoor business permit for the First Congregational Church of Oxford to hold the flea market on June 5th, August 7th, and October 2nd, from 8 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the church located at 355 Main Street, and to waive the fee for the renewal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve that request. Any comments or questions? Not seeing any. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. They are approved. Fantastic. All right. About two minutes.
Sorry, I don't understand.
Sorry. It's really good for taking my phone out. Didn't know what time was. I watch this a little slow, like the guy wearing that, I guess. All right. Time being 7:15, we'll open up the Continued Public Hearing for a special permit for the earth removal, which is applicant S&amp;K Development LLC, 19 Oxford Road. This is continued from our April 20th, 2021. I am going to invoke the rule of necessity. And the rule of necessity is invoked because we have only four people on this board at the time. One of them is a neighbor. So I will let him handle that. But so I would like to invoke that rule. Selectmen Daniels, would you like to?
So I am in a butter to the property for this earth removal permit. I live at 13 Oxford Road in North Oxford. As of right now, well, no, I have no financial interest in this project that's taking place. So I feel I would be able to remain impartial to the vote.
All right. I think we're all set. Any problems with the applicants on that request? Very good. All right, then. I would like a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion to open and second, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, for an affirmative, one absent. The public hearing is open. Anyone that is speaking on this, I would ask you to state your name and address for the record. And all right, so let's start out with the opponent. Yep. Yes, please do.
My name is Mika Lasala from S. Channeling Engineering. Can we give the business address or home address?
Business address. Yeah, business address.
305 Whitney Street, Leamont Street. Where shall I place this for the best viewing? We have people on.
What about over that side of the table, perhaps? Okay, maybe turn it just this way.
You're looking at that screen over there.
Yeah, yeah. There you go.
Go further.
Right, yep.
There you go.
It's behind me. Yeah, I have the PDF.
Okay.
Okay, PDF, that'd be good. It's a five-sheet PDF. From over here, or do I need to be by the way, or?
You should be by the microphone, I think, so that the people at home can hear.
Hey, I'm here on behalf of S&amp;K Development. You're probably on Oxford Road. Jim, could you come up and sort of... Ben White. This is, I'm Jim Smith. He's also, he's one of the applicants for S&amp;K. The plan that you have before you is on Oxford Road on the northerly side, just north of Route 20. It's a 5.8 acre piece of property that is currently somewhat wooded, somewhat brush. It's a mixture of cover. In 2004, the previous property owner had sought an earth removal permit for the property. Actually, it was 2003. And they were issued a permit. And some conditions that, times of operation, that caused disturb with some of the butters. And the Board of Selectmen rescinded that permit. So since 2004, that property has pretty much sat vacant. And it's a partially started earth removal project. What our applicant is proposing to do is continue the earth removal project and get it to a point where we can continue and develop in the future three house lots. Because there's sufficient area and frontage there on Oxford Road for three lots. Back in 2004, soil testing was done, and those are identified on their, on the plan. And grading and earth removal was done partially to those points. And again, because it was discontinued, it was left as it is on the site currently. There is a construction trailer, miscellaneous spare parts and debris, and tires, and concrete structures and such. And at the entranceway, if you want to point to the entrance, there's a, currently, there's a gate at the entrance. And to the left-hand side, to the northern side of the gate, there's a small depression that was excavated for sediment. And further into the site, on the opposite side of the driveway, there's a similar depression area for siltation. And that's typical for erosion control. When this, when this project was done, and the original plans for the project showed swales and low points to collect sediment until the property is stabilized. So now if we flip over to the next sheet, that's the same view with the underlaid 2019 photography, where you can see USGS ortho photo off Mass. GIS, where you can see there's some greenery, there's some vegetation, you can kind of make out where some of the paths are into the property. So again, that's the same existing condition sheet. If you, Jim, if you could turn to the next, to the proposed. What we're proposing is respecting the 50-foot setback required for earth removal to the property lines along the rear, backside, and along the frontage, and continue with the grading that was begun at a gentle, well, at a 5% slope from the back. When we go from, we worked the grading from the 50-foot setback, two to one, and then we worked at 5% to the existing driveway access point. This will get it to a point where we can then move forward with additional testing for soil absorption systems, because currently, the way it is, it's, it's, it'd be impossible to meet the Title V minimum maximum cover and setback rating for breakout, because it's just very steep slopes and unstable slopes. It's just really not conducive for development in its current state. So what they're proposing to do is basically clean it up, get it to where we can work with it, and then come back for a second permit to take the remaining material that is unsuitable for development, or actually too steep for development, I should say. So if you flip that page over, you can see, it's got overlaid. That's the proposed overlaying on the existing photo. And we're respecting, and you can see the erosion control that we proposed along the roadway. It's that darker line, and then along the back, near the ridge line. And we've also proposed construction fencing along that, that line during the operation until slopes are stabilized. We're proposing to utilize the existing depression that's on the northwest corner. Kind of further, nope, towards you, yep, right, right in there, there's an existing depression. We'd utilize that for catching some of the runoff. And also, on either side, right and left, just make those areas a little bit larger by the, by the entranceway. Currently, the, the property, it's kind of, it's a triangular-shaped wedge. North to south is right through the center is approximately the, the high point or the drainage divide. So most of this is going, the property is draining towards the west, down Oxford Road. A small portion of the property drains to the abutting properties on Oxford to the east. One of Mr. Daniels' property, and then the next one to the, to the east.
The other east.
That's west. Yes, those properties over there, that currently, the part of the property drains towards that. When the earth removal is done, we are going to obviously remove the grade, and the drainage will be directed towards southwest. And the hours, and I think that the previous permit, there was issues with hours of operation, working on holidays, not having portable sanitation on site, not having a gate. I believe those are the issues of the previous permit, and they have, the applicant has no issues with meeting those requirements. And again, to the timing of this material, it would, removal in town, it's a five-year permit. So I mean, that's a five-year window to, to work on this. Again, material is driven really by need and necessity, where if there's projects that require material in town or other, other places that utilizes. From an access standpoint, for, for vehicles leaving the site, I would highly recommend that they just go down Oxford Road towards the east and then on to Route 20 versus taking the meandering route through all the residential areas. It's just really counterproductive. And, and this isn't dissimilar to what the town had done probably about 20 years ago on the corner of Oxford Road. There's about a 3/4 acre piece on the corner that the town had done an earth removal project and leveled that area. So this project, when it comes to completion, hopefully with the homes being built, it would improve even the site distance and around that corner. Because right now, it's, some vegetation needs to be cut, and just coming around that corner, it's kind of hard to see. And if, in the future, if there's houses there, you're going to want to have that a little bit cleared to be for site visibility purposes. And that about summarizes the project. The board has any questions?
All members, do we want to have the, maybe people that are watching ask questions first? Or would you prefer to ask your questions first?
All right.
All right, I'm gonna, before I get into some of the questions I have, I'm gonna open it up to people that are watching, maybe a butters or something. Again, if you're going to speak, just state your name and your address for the record, please, and so we'll start with that. Are there any butters that would like to ask questions or comment?
Yes, hi. My name is Mike Carraba. I live at 7R Oxford.
Hold on, hold on. Can you up the volume a little? Oh, and how do I do that? Just hit volume? Let's try that again.
My name is Michael Carraba. I live at 7R Oxford. I'm in a butter. And I had a few questions. Carraba, can you hear me?
He's here.
Hey.
Hold on.
Just hold on a sec. We're trying to get the volume a little better.
I was told not to speak loud.
I can't hear it.
Yeah.
Because you have to be straightened.
Does that come out of this? I'm talking again.
Yeah.
Go ahead, speak again.
Okay.
My name is Michael Carraba.
Not any louder. I can.
I'm talking again.
Try it again, Mike.
Yes, can you hear me now?
No. Now we can't hear my phone.
Love modern technology.
They haven't talked again.
Try again.
Mike? Hello, can you hear me now?
Are you unmuted?
Yes, they can't hear me. They're trying to turn up their volume. Do we turn up sensitivity?
I don't, I don't know. Listen, I know what to do.
Okay, then forget it. They didn't say that. They're just trying to, where is my thingy?
No. There is.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I know who's talking.
Mark can hear me? They can't hear me. No.
Has anyone else, like, watching spoken? Because maybe it's...
No, they're waiting for me. Yeah, actually, they have volume. They're trying to turn it up. Mark can hear me.
Jim, what if you go back to...
That TV's not even coming up. It's already 37.
Maybe they can hear you, Mark.
Can't hear me either, right?
I can hear you.
Ah, see, we can have our own little conversation.
Yeah, we'll talk back and forth. Open your window.
I know.
Try it again.
Hello, testing.
No, nothing.
Can you hear me now?
It's coming just through the laptop speaker.
Yeah, I don't know.
Want to see if I can get up, speak up downstairs?
No, 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 just...
Out of the laptop.
Can you call it?
That's putting volume up right now.
They haven't talked again.
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, but not very well.
Yeah.
Not very well.
Try it again.
Now it's coming over there.
Hello?
Oh, now we can.
Now you can hear me?
Yes.
All right.
Pretty well.
My name is Mike Carraba. I live at 7R Oxford. And I have a few questions that pertain to it, and a few concerns. Shall I start?
Yep, go right ahead, sir.
I was, how much is the cubic yardage that they want to remove?
The grading week, it's going to be about 75,000 yards.
That's an awful lot of dirt. I'm a background, I've been in construction since 1984, heavy equipment operator and truck driver. That is a ton of dirt. And I don't know if anybody understands how many truckloads of dirt that is. But a tri-axle dump carries about 16 yards of dirt. So that would equivalent to almost 4,700 loads on a tri-axle dump. A trailer dump hauls about 22 yards, and that would be about 3,400 loads. So if you take the amount of loads, times it by two, because they're going to come in one end of the street and go back out the end of the street, you're doubling those figures. So the point I'm trying to get to is, our road is in very bad disrepair. I mean, like, you can't even walk it. They cannot, where the last ones in town, they get plowed. And when they do plow it and try to treat it, if anybody's ever come down the street, you can see the plow. You've got like six to eight. The ten inches of snow maybe at the. Sides of the road, because the road is crowned and all beat from all the traffic, probably from when they did. The original um. Mess that they made on that property. So there there'll be nothing left of the road at all by the time they get halfway done. Um, the road is cracked, broken in front of Mark's, Mr. Walker's house. Who's what number you mark? Eleven? Um. The road is just all broken apart. They come down with a little bit of cold patch once a year. There's no way this road can take that kind of beating. And my second concern is. The water, not so much surface water. The water in the ground, the hydraulic pressure in the ground, the water bleeds out ten to eleven months a year. Out of the bankings, out of Mark's driveway. My driveway. My property up top. I have a long driveway um way up above where this land is as far as um topographical. And I just took out the corner of my property. About fifteen feet deep. For a backyard, it just in one corner, like, you know, two sides. And the water, I hydroseated it, hydroseated it. The water just washes the sand. The water runs through the layers of different materials. You know what I mean? It's. I think it would be a bad thing down there to take that much material out. I don't think my house would ever get. It would never settle, but that poor A-frame right next to it. I guarantee sooner or later it's going to settle. Like I said, anybody's welcome to walk my property. The fines just keep coming out. Out of the banking. I would be worried if I was real close to it. With that aspect, and I'm sure that's what ruins the road down there, too. Um, all the water, it just never stops. It's not, like I said, it's not runoff. Um. We all deal with the hill. I deal with the hill between me and the A-frame. My driveway, you can barely walk it. You need forward, like my pickup truck in two wheel drive barely makes it up my driveway in this weather. Um, the A-frame is the same, I mean. My concern, why ruin our road and ruin our houses and our lots possibly? No guarantee, but there's no guarantee it's not going to happen. Um, I just assume having to deal with the hill like everybody else here on the street. Versus, you know, letting them drag something off for five years and I guarantee it'll it'll ruin the rest of the road. And I'll stop talking.
All right, well, thank you very much for your concerns and comments. Um, any other residents that would like to speak? Yes, please.
Mark Walker, eleven Oxbow Road. Uh, I've got a lot of the same concerns that Mike voiced. Um, this road is is in bad shape. We try to go running down the road. Uh, and it's all crowned, like you said, you know, you you really can't navigate it very safely. Um, the thought of six thousand trips up and down the road with dump trucks with my my daughter out here with no sidewalks is concerning. Um, the the amount of water that comes down this hill, my, one of my concerns, how could that possibly even impact? My my well down the road. If they start moving water and what the, you know, what's underground is redirected. Is that, oh, five years from now, if my if my well is all of a sudden drying up and I've got to dig deeper and I'm going to have to eat that, you know, it's not going to be something I can. Easily point back and say, hey, remember when they removed all that earth and changed the direction of the water? Don't know enough about it. Give me a good feeling about it. Um, but you know, and and I want, I don't want to restate everything that Mike said, but a lot of those same things that I that I feel, you know. The the lots enough that you can push some dirt around and and and, you know, if you can't get the three houses, maybe you get two, but, you know. When when they did this house here, you know, they 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 worked with what they had. They didn't go digging into the bank and pull a lot of earth out, you know, kind of keep it natural as much as you can. Put, you know, I I I know there's probably some, you know, loose earth, but push it around, level it out and. You know, without really making all those disruptions. Those are my main concerns.
All right, thank you very much, Mike. Anyone else uh from the, go right ahead, please, ma'am?
Hi, um, my name is Jennifer King. I live at fifteen Oxbow Road and I'm in a butter. Um. I'm actually probably the closest to what's going to be going on on the hill. Um, if you look at the diagram. Um. I I won't take too long, but I wanted to reiterate, uh, the concerns about the road are su- are super legitimate. Um, I I drive downtown to go running because I can't even run on this road. It's that bad. And I can't even imagine what the extra impact of all these truckloads is going to do to it. So that's my main concern. Um, a couple secondary concerns I have. Along with the water runoff issue is um the well issue. Um, I, we actually had to just spend twelve thousand dollars on our well because we had arsenic leach into it. Um, and. My concern is that with all this disruption, I'm wondering, has there been any? Study of how this will affect the the wells of the surrounding properties? Um, as far as both volume and the potential to disrupt more. Um, more contaminants such as arsenic. Back into the well. Um, I that is not a nightmare I want to deal with again. And um I'm very concerned that the disruption of all this digging may. Cause that to be a problem again. Um, and. Uh, I, the only other concern I have is obviously the safety. It's a dan- dangerous road and. That is a lot of trips and a lot of trucks. Um, there's wildlife, people around here have chickens, there's children, there's zero. Room for error on this road. There's no shoulder. Um, it's it's crowned and then totally encompassed on both sides by. Uh woodland, so there's no place to go. A truck can barely pass through. Um, this street the way it's set up right now. So I'm just wondering if there has been any discussion about. Um, how to mitigate those potential impacts? Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Um. Jared, is that something we would do on a project like this or?
With respect to the width of the road?
No, the uh the well, yeah.
I don't really, we've done that historically, you know, I'm not a hydrogeologist geologist myself, but you know, maybe a concern there that's worth having the applicant look into. You know, we're lowering, taking that much volume of material out. This potential lower the groundwater table, I can't really say for sure, but. They warrant further investigation.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Jen. We're going to look into that on the well issue. That's, thank you for your comment. Um, any other uh members of the public that would like to say anything? All right, then, since that's the case, um. At this point, I think what we could do is close the public hearing. And then go to selectmen's comments and questions and go from there.
Make a motion to close the public hearing? Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Uh, any other comments or questions? Call for vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. It's for an affirmative, one absent. The public hearing is closed. We thank you all for your comments. Um, board members, do we have any questions or comments at this point? Yes, selectman LeBlanc.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I know you have another public hearing that was slated for seven forty.
Yep.
I would just ask that the board could pause their comments on this public hearing and perhaps open that with uh the ability to continue it. Because it's slated for seven forty.
Got one at seven fifty.
Right. So if you if you read the notice, open it and then um then it's open, then you've done that part of it and you can come back to it.
So we can just postpone discussion on this temporarily and come back to it?
Yeah, you've already closed the public hearing on this and you'll just come back to this to continue to speak, no different than any agenda item.
All right, that's all, if you don't mind, um.
He's just going to read the notice.
Do you want the motion to open it and pause it at the same time?
Yeah, ocean, uh open and continue, yeah. But let uh he needs to read it into the record to open the public here for um.
Right.
Yeah.
We don't need to do anything to pause this this discussion on that particular.
If you want to take a formal vote to say we'll continue after, you know, every turn.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Entertain a motion to uh postpone this for discussion later on this evening.
Make that motion.
All right, call for a vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. It's for an affirmative, one absent. We will get back to this, take a look. I have a few and we'll get to uh seven forty, which is a public hearing. That La Porta Incorporated doing business as El Patron Corona, which is a new pouring license. Um, excuse me, let me read the uh notice, uh public hearing notice into the record. Well, Porta Incorporated doing business as El Patron Corona has applied to the Oxford Board of Selectmen for a new all alcoholic restaurant pouring liquor license. Oscar Araza to be manager. This license will be exercised in the building located at one oh one to one twenty one Sutton Ave, unit one one one. Which is located in the plaza known as Oxford Crossing. The name to appear on the license will be La Porta Incorporated doing business as El Patron Corona. The premises are described as a single story shopping center located at one oh one to one twenty three Sutton Ave. In Oxford, Mass, unit one hundred and eleven to be licensed. One room, one entrance, two exits, four forty seven hundred square feet. Outdoor patio of five hundred sixty square feet. Total square feet of premises is equals fifty two hundred and sixty square feet. A public hearing will be held remotely before the Oxford Board of Selectmen regarding this matter on Tuesday, June first, twenty twenty one at seven forty P M via. Via Zoom. Written and oral comments from the public will be accepted before or during this hearing. So uh with that, um. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Make that motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second or call for a vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. The public hearing is open. And again, anybody speaking on this, I would ask you to state your name and address for the record.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think that what um Madam Manager had requested was that we pause this hearing to continue.
Continue back to the other hearing.
Oh.
Yeah, you can do that too.
Okay, cool. So we'll come back to this. All right, cool.
So I'd make a motion to continue this hearing until after we've concluded the previous. Agenda item. Second.
I have a motion and a second and I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. We will get back to this in a few minutes. Thank you. I kind of missed that. All right, so now um let's, we're back to the original. Uh, she'd come forward again. Board members, so we're back to, I think, selectmen LeBlanc, you had a question?
Yes, so thank you. Um. I have a couple of questions um in regards to the final. There's nothing to my madness. I'm just going to ask, if you don't want to answer any questions about what the final outcome will be, um, that's fine, because it's not related to this earth permit. So um, but I do have a couple of questions, which were kind of a follow up to some of the things that the residents had said. So ultimately, this is going to end up being three buildable lots, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then on the buildable lot scale, um, because you had mentioned something about you brought up the title five, you need enough space for title five. So I'm assuming in that snick of the woods. And as per what the resident said, we're also looking at private wells, correct? Okay, now, this particular piece of property abuts Charlton, correct? Up on the, it doesn't abut Charlton at all?
No, it's all in Oxford.
It's all in Oxford. How how close to Charlton are you, though? Are you relatively close through the back road?
No, I mean. It's. Charlton line is here.
Yep.
We're over here.
You're over there. Okay, I understand that then. All right, thank you. And so. Okay, so. And my question is that when you were, so is it? Is it accurate what that, what the resident was talking about, about bringing in and taking out all of that, the dirt? Is that accurate or is there going to be, is there a location in there that you're going to retain some of that? Or is that true how many trucks we're really looking at?
That will probably during a five year span, that would be the.
Okay, okay, um. Now, did did you not say that during, when you were in your presentation, that instead of going down Oxbow Road, you'd be looking at coming on the other side of it? Did I understand that correctly or no?
Existing, the existing, we'd be utilizing where they began.
Gotcha.
There's an existing partial gate there in a trailer.
Got it, okay. All right, I just wanted to get clarification as far as I was concerned. Um. And then my last question is, is if you were, I understand that there are hours noted in the in the DPW's report of when you're going to work. You said that was fine, you would work with that. Um, are you thinking if this is a year end, like a year round project for five years or is it a stop and start project? Where you might do it for three months out of the year?
Typically, these wouldn't be going on during the winter months.
Okay, so you're thinking eight, nine months?
Yeah.
At a.
Yeah, during, yeah, when it's snowing on the ground, you're not going to be doing this.
I understood, understood, okay.
Yeah, and even from a practicality standpoint, um, we're going back with the title five comment. If you're being familiar with the area, it's it's a steep bank and and the. The town allows you to remove five hundred yards, which is not very much for a single house lot.
Right.
Anything beyond that is a special project. So any lot. That we build on here just to get off Oxbow Road into that. In that grade that's, yeah, that's about twenty by twenty area to kind of give you a visual. So. Um, an earth removal permit will be utilized to get into the property development. The other option is you put in a definitive subdivision, uh but that's really cost prohibitive as far as. Density and and just infrastructure costs. It just, given that we already have existing road frontage. And with with title five, what you have is your your breakout grade. So let's say. The gentleman had mentioned, just work with what you have, well. Some of these areas, there's just, there's a real steep grades. I mean, it's two to one, title five max is five to one, I mean, three to one. And what you're going to end up having is that you have to, so you don't have your breakout effluent bleeding out your hillside. You'd have to cut the material down so you can develop the property. So that requires earth removal.
Right.
So what we've done here, what the proposal here is to remove. In in keeping with the previous permit in that was done, take the material out. Leaving a written, what the grading, as we have it shown, there'd still be a burn along. Along Oxbow Road. By coming back, we'd have to come back for another earth removal permit to develop those lots, be able to get into it. Unless we do a common driveway or we do some other. The subdivision, because we will be able to access that frontage.
Gotcha. So your your building is way out. Meaning you're not, this is.
Not this, not, 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 it's several years old.
Definitely, okay. Okay. And have you, my last question is, um. I know you've, I know you've developed before. Have you ever encountered any issues with disturbing existing property?
As far as?
Uh, like they, like they had made a mention about the wells, you know, if that, you know, have you ever encountered anything along those lines? No.
Again, it depends where is their well located and. And how the hydrology of the underneath, under underlying strata.
Yeah.
On their property is, I don't know.
Yeah.
And that hasn't been investigated onto their properties. And I think the DPW. And I think the DPW mentioned that it's not a requirement. Typical requirement is that we're matching the pre and post drainage and we're not flooding out somebody and we're not undermining the road or we're not providing a home.
Gotcha. That was helpful.
And yes, there is an existing. They are correct in that that road has a substantial crown, but in a way it does, the crown is there for drainage. It is for keeping, controlling the way the runoff goes. Moving forward, if this project were to move forward and receive approval, it would allow actually providing a shoulder along, along the property at the end of, at the end of the project. You'd have somewhere for the snow to go when you're plowing and, and obviously, yes, there will be wear and tear on the road. It's already in a worn state. But again, that's a, some conditions that can be placed by the, by the board to address that.
Sure, I understand. Uh, okay, thank you very much. That was helpful. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. And the Slickman Daniels, yes?
You, you had mentioned that you're going to be doing this potentially in two parts, the earth removal.
Realistically, yes.
Okay, the seventy-five thousand yards, is that all in the first permit?
That's this first permit, yes.
Permit, okay. Um, and then do you know how much, or you, you can't make an estimate?
I, I can't make an estimate because what we'd have to go back and do additional soil testing out there to determine that we, in the areas along the berm, that we leave sufficient material.
Okay. And then you had mentioned the, the way it's drawn right now is you'd be redirecting most of the drainage um, away from the properties from the east and north and back down towards the southwest corner.
Yeah.
Um, what's going to happen with the water? Like, everybody stated so far, there, there's a significant amount of water on this hillside.
Yes.
And, uh, one of my concerns is if we're redirecting a lot of groundwater down towards that southwest corner, how, where is it going from there? How is it getting under the road, across the road? Um, back down into the soil. I know there's a significant amount of wetlands just over on the other side of the road, yeah.
Much more though, yeah.
Yeah. Yep, so I'm just concerned about where and how that water is going to move through that small section.
The way we, right now, the existing, basically cutting the property, these dark boundaries, this, this drainage pass, how the property is, the whole wrapping around tire printer and basically cutting it in half essentially, just following how the tray is currently. And then there's a low spot internally in here. Our proposed, we're basically mimicking that pattern, we're running here and we're reducing what's actually going on to these properties to the east. And right now, the way the property is, it's very steep and basically bare dirt, runoff characteristics of bare dirt and steep slopes. Water comes off really fast. So once this is graded and a little bit seeded, uh, it's going to have a long gentle slope. So there's going to be a lot of long attenuation time that you have time, time concentration, time for the water to leach back into the ground. Uh, and what we, for, for construction purposes, we provide low spots here to contain the catch differential, the bottom, the peak rate of runoff for the various storms required.
Slickman Daniels, could I interrupt?
Ultimately, it comes this way. We're at the crest, this is like the high point of the road. So half of this goes to the west, half goes to the east. So again, we're mimicking that same amount, the same volume of water is falling off hillside. And given the steep grade that it is, any bleed out, I certainly understand that bleeding out occurring. But we are going to be flattening that hillside and giving it a long, long run to give it time to leach into the ground.
All right, uh, if I could, I'd just like to pause again. We have another uh, public hearing notice for seven fifty, so we'll get right back to you. And that is for Jay Anthony's, um, Italian Grill Incorporated doing, um, alterations to the premises and liquor license two oh six Southbridge Street. I will read the notice into the record. Uh, Gina Villatico, manager at Jay Anthony's Italian Grill and Lounge Incorporated doing business as Jay Anthony's Italian Grill located at two oh four and two oh six Southbridge Road, North Oxford, Mass. Applied to the Board of Selectmen for an alteration of premises concerning the all alcohol pouring liquor license. The alteration requested is to convert first floor middle dining area into a nineteen foot by fifteen foot full service bar with exceeding capacity of twenty-eight. Public hearing will be held before the Board of Selectmen regarding this matter on Tuesday, June first, twenty twenty-one at seven fifty P M via Zoom. Written in oral comments from the public will be accepted at this meeting. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing and to pause this, to come back to it after we've had our other two hearings.
Make that motion.
Second.
And I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, we have opened it, but we will come back to that in a few minutes. And while we're at it, we might, uh, we also have an eight o'clock public hearing for the American Legion. That was supposed to be at eight o'clock, so, and the American Legion post is alterations of premises. I'll read it into the record, the notice. Cheryl Bolio, manager of Oxford American Legion Post fifty-eight Incorporated located at two twenty-seven Main Street, Oxford, Mass. Applied to the Board of Selectmen for an alteration of premises concerning the all alcohol pouring license, liquor license. The alteration request is to add a sixty foot by thirty foot outside grass area on the north side of the building. The outdoor seating area will not increase the occupancy limit. The outside area will be fenced in with three areas for entrance and exit. The public hearing will be held before the Board of Selectmen regarding the matter on Tuesday, June first, twenty twenty-one at eight o'clock via Zoom. Written in oral comments from the public will be accepted at this hearing. And I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing and to pause this and we'll get to it at the later on, I'm meeting.
Make that motion.
Second.
And I will call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, that hearing is open, but we have paused and we'll get back to our Oxbow, um, special permit for earth removal. So Slickman Daniels, you're back on.
Okay. Do you know how many trucks you would be expecting to move uh, to be on that road a day?
Sure, up, uh, a day? I think the limitation would be hours of operation versus in season and just demand, it's.
Um, and then the last question I have, and I'm not sure if this is more directed towards you or the town. So I know traffic was brought up as a concern, um, the increased truck traffic. Uh, one of the other large issues regarding that road is people coming right off Route twenty. They forget to slow down before that corner for some reason, and it's a very sharp corner. Um, I know it's very difficult and it's a blind driveway for those trucks pulling out of there. Um, have we done? Is there anything in place in regards to, uh, additional signage, additional warnings?
On which intersection are you referring to?
So coming from Route twenty westbound onto Oxbow Road heading west, yes, uh, from.
So you go on Route twenty when you come in?
Yeah, a- actually both directions. Um, it, it's a blind driveway from both directions and.
This is one way. You can't, when you're pulling out, I can't turn east, it's solely.
You could, correct. So if you're heading west on Route twenty and you exit Route twenty onto Oxbow Road.
Yes.
Car, there's low visibility as you're coming around that corner, uh, the Oxbow Road.
Oh, to see Oxbow, it's where you stand.
Once you're on Oxbow Road.
Okay.
There's low visibility, that sharp corner in the bottom of the pavement.
Yeah, so additional signage, trucks entering caution.
Yes, uh.
Because there's a similar sign to that effect actually on Oxbow Road on, uh, chasing this project because of this project. Caution trucks entering.
Correct. Which for a while had, was buried in some vegetation.
Correct.
And just now cleaned out, so, um, but is, is there consideration for that? Um, can there be consideration for that? Yeah. Um, the. Um, uh, other than that, um.
And again, how, how we use that, that's, uh, state maintained?
Oxbow Road.
No.
Twenty, yeah, Route twenty is state maintained. Um, and of course, that's another concern is the trucks pulling out onto Route twenty from Oxbow Road. That's, um, a rough intersection to pull out of in just a private vehicle. So having a slow moving full dump truck pulling out into Route twenty would be a safety concern. And I, I have no additional questions, um, without going through and repeating all the concerns that everybody else had already stated.
All right, thank you, Slickman Daniels. I have, I have the same major concern. That is a very tough location, Oxbow Road and Route twenty. And, um, when you come out of there, you're going to have to go west. So you're going to have to head down into Charlton. Um, are you like going down to the light and turning around and, and, or, you know, where's the, where are you taking the fill? Probably would be my question.
That's going to be a thing where we're driven, where, where, where's projects? Where, where it would go, but I mean, obviously, if you're going, if it needs to go eastbound, it would have to first go on Route twenty and then, yes, you'd have to enter into Charlton.
Yeah.
And then come around. And I believe that's in one of the parameters with a special permit. That's why you notify the adjoining towns when there's a, when there's a special permit so that they, they're aware that this is occurring.
It's just, uh, it's such a bad, bad area. Um, I, I have a major concern with that. Like Slickman Daniels stated, uh, you know, a slow truck taking that corner, um, and the people, the way they travel that, that section of road, I, I can see all sorts of problems. Question I have, is there any ledge on that property that you know?
That's, that's, that's my knowledge.
No ledge, so we wouldn't have to be blasting or anything like that. And how do you limit the noise? What do you do about the noise factor? I mean, you're, you're operating, let's say, uh, nine to five. You know, it's an awful lot of noise for these residents to have to put up with. You know, dust control, I know you're going to have.
Yeah, you have to water for dust control, but even, even here, for the most part, the topography lends itself, we are going down. It's, it's, most of it's going to be in a hole. Obviously, the truck traffic's the noise of a, of a truck. And there's no really mitigating the, uh, the exhaust system of how loud a truck is. But yeah, that's a as far as, as the project's going, it's just the natural topography that's there. It's really kind of, it's going to create a bowl. So yes, immediately, uh, when the project's underway, as you could, my point is about easier. What we're proposing is this lower here, you know, the sound particularly here, the, the, obviously, the most impacted is, is Mr. Daniels, he's, he's right here. Yeah, the King property, there's a, the grade comes up considerably and then it drops back down. It's going to be a good twenty feet of urban berm blocking here. Likewise, the houses to the north, we're going to be twenty to thirty feet below the, those houses, most of this project is going on. The only ones that would be, would be disturbed, Mr. Daniels, Mr. Daniels property, because that's on a whole level. And then obviously, dust is, is watering, the water tank that happens on site.
All right. All right, well, let's, like I said, I, I don't know, I just have a major, major concern with the Route twenty issue. And the, the well bothers me for these residents, uh, what this, all this is going to do to their wells. You know? Um, I don't know. Board members, what would you like to do?
I have one more question for.
Go right ahead.
Would it, would it be on the town or the applicant to, um, we brought up saying about the wells and the, uh, what's that, hydraulic geo, geology? It, that, that's the big concern is the wells because that's, everybody drinks water and we're getting it straight from the tap out there. Uh, it's great water when it's treated. So is this something we can look into?
I would say that the board reserves the right to impose special conditions as far as the, the permit approval. So I think that that would be, uh, a balance, it would be merit behind that condition if you want the applicant to investigate that further.
First, I'd like to see that done before I, I would approve this special permit. Yeah, excuse me.
When you were, no, no, when you were done, I was going to make a comment if it was all right.
Mr. Chairman, also, um, I think that there's been a lot of, um, public input this evening. And, uh, you know, one of the things that the board could do is take that input as well as the director for the DPW take that input. Um, you would have the option of perhaps incorporating some of, um, what has, uh, been concerns for the board and or, uh, public. Uh, have our DPW director review what he has put in for some recommendations and perhaps, um, continue the hearing for by itself, not, not a night when we have other things, where there can be a lot more give and take about, um, some of the, uh, information that has arisen from the public and has been concerning to the board and have that also put in for recommendations by our DPW director.
All right.
It's just an option.
Uh, I was just going to say, I looked through all the special conditions, um, that Jared had provided with us and it looks like just about everything has been covered in it, um, with the exception of this well issue that was brought up tonight. Is this something where we could potentially approve it contingent upon them following the special conditions and also ensuring that there would be no negative effect on groundwater or surrounding wells to get the, um, input from the specialist? So that we don't further delay the project? I mean, I, I assume you're looking to start this sooner rather than later because we're coming into warm weather, is that?
Correct.
Correct. Um, because I also have the same concerns about the groundwater and the wells. I want to make sure that drinking water isn't affected. However, I think that we could perhaps give the, um, DPW director a little bit of leeway here to work with them, to come to a plan that would be agreeable to everybody and the safety of the groundwater and the drinking water is, is that something that board members would be willing to consider in the form of a motion or would you rather just continue the hearing?
I personally would rather to continue, just so they've had the opportunity to go over the paperwork and. just consider what the residents have brought up.
I'd like to continue personally, um. I'd, I'd, I really, um, I, I wanna review some of the comments that these um, residents have made. You know, it's a tough road. Um, it's a tough location to get on through twenty. I, I'd really just like to think about it personally, so. Um, I wouldn't be in favor of approving this, this evening personally, so. I would rather entertain a motion to, uh, bring this up at a later meeting. Um, I don't know what our meetings look like as far as.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Since we've all checked in. Why not meet this longer? Right? So, uh, these are my comments. This is, these are my thoughts in regards to this. Um. First of all, I understand from business perspective, you wanna move on. Spend nineteen years, right? It's time to move on. And I think that, um, I think that the concerns that the residents made were valid. And I don't think that as anxious as you are to move forward, you know, you would not want the residents out there picketing or, you know, or something along those lines, right? So I, I, I get that.
Well, he's a local business. He's not gonna want that either.
Of course. And, and you know what? And we're grateful for that, really, because that's what we really try to be about. On the flip side, there's been a permit that's been kind of hanging out there since two thousand and four. And at some point, you know, we had to know, especially in this particular real estate market, that someone's gonna come along and pick that up and do something with it, right? That's my take on it. So.
It's not the same two thousand and four company.
Correct. No, no, yeah, yeah.
Understood. Yes, yes, I'm, 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 I'm well aware that it's.
But it's been, it's.
It's been hanging out there.
It's an eyesore.
It, it is. It's been hanging out there and to a certain extent, there's some benefit to that, right? There's benefit to the town. You improving an eyesore, um, you're putting property back on a tax roll. Um, you know, there are some things that need to be worked out, but we're really not at that level, right? We just wanna get this dirt out of there type of thing. That's where we wanna get so we can move to the next step.
We wanna make a, a level playing field essentially.
Exactly.
Unattended, uh.
Right. But on the flip side, we do have residents who have lived up there for a really long time.
Yes.
And I think they have brought up some great points. And I think that I would be of the mindset, I'd be willing to continue the hearing, but under a very short window so that you could work with Jared to kind of work out these issues. And I think that, I don't wanna speak for everyone, but I think that we would all want to make this palatable for everyone, so we could do that. The one thing that I would personally like to see, I would like to see continuing dialogue with the residents as this project moves forward so that they feel comfortable if there are issues. And I'm not saying that there will be, but I think that it would be important for them to be able to go to someone and say, hey, listen, you know, your truck started at seven thirty this morning, you know, type of thing. That's not our deal. You know, I'd like to continue to keep the dialogue open for them as well as us. And at the end of the day, we'd like, obviously, would love to see that piece of property improved upon. And, um, I think that's my position on it. So I'm perfectly okay continuing it. I think that it would be okay, but I would ask the rest of the board if we continue it rather quickly for everyone. That would be my take on it. Thank you.
And, um, I've checked, our next meeting is two, we've got forty B's.
Yeah.
But it's, uh, our next meeting is quite, so. The next possibility would be July sixth, which we have very little on there, um. To be honest, we're supposed to do town managers', uh, review. So I don't think that would be, I don't know.
I'm not certain that I'll be here on July sixth.
Next, next meeting right now is.
We can't squeeze it on the fifteenth.
Yeah, we probably can. It's gonna be another long one, so. All right.
You can make it a special meeting. You can make it a special meeting, just, you know, post it publicly, go, you know.
Well, we can't do Zoom after June fifteenth. Otherwise, I'd be able to be here on the sixth, but. Yeah, whatever, whatever it takes. I mean, Jared, does that give you enough time to, to work with them?
Yeah, yeah, that's perfectly acceptable.
Okay.
So.
The logistics of the bill of, if, um, one of the board of this can't make the meeting.
Everyone has to be here, right?
Right, cuz we can't vote.
Right.
Right.
Correct.
Right. That's why I was hoping to squeeze it on the fifteenth for you.
Sure, that would be wonderful.
But it's. Early, early a time slot.
It's not up to just me.
But it's up, right, exactly.
All right, we'll do that. We'll, we'll, uh, let's, I've entertained a motion to continue this, uh, till July fifteenth.
June fifteen.
I mean, June fifteenth. Thank you.
Make a motion to continue it to June fifteenth.
Of twenty twenty one.
Of twenty twenty one, at a time to be determined. Second.
All right. Any other comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, there's one absent. Thank you very much for your patience and we'll see you June fifteenth.
Yes.
All right. So let's move on to our next public hearing, which is uh, La Porta Incorporated doing business as El Patron Corona. And like I, I would ask that anyone speaking on this to please state your name and address for the record. Um. So we'll open it up to who's here. Who's here from, uh?
Oscar and Sergio.
Yes, we're both here and in Oscar's there as well.
We do. All right.
And I'll stay here as well.
Okay.
All right. You get that? All right, so, uh, you're, you're hoping to open up a, uh, establishment and you need a license. Correct?
Yes.
Well, what kind of a, a restaurant is this gonna be?
This is gonna be a Mexican restaurant.
All right.
We're all gonna have mind read it.
Um, okay.
Get them to go.
Well, this is a, uh, public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this matter? I do not see any. Okay. Then, um, board members, do we have any comments or questions? All right. Um, good, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make that motion? Second.
And I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, the public hearing is closed. And what would we like to do? Leave it open today. You like to make a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I looked through the packet. Everything seems to be in line. Um, so with everything that's in front of us, I would be comfortable making a motion that the board vote to approve the all pouring license for La Perota Incorporated doing businesses as El Patron Corona. Contingent upon the payment of the license, proof of workers' compensation insurance, revenue enforcement and protection attestation, proof of liquor liability insurance, a successful one-ten safety inspection, state workers' compensation affidavit, business certificate if required. Um, one-two-zero-eight-B certificate, emergency contact form, payment of taxes, and to forward to the A B C C for review and approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the license. Any comments or questions by the board? See any, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, you are approved. So now it's all up to the A B C and we gotta meet those conditions. Thank you very much for being appreciated. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So now, oh, now we go to a comment today for, we're not quite done yet.
Yeah.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the, uh, common vicular license for the same, uh, La Porta Incorporated doing businesses as El Patron Corona. Um. Okay. Board members, what would we like to do with this one?
I'd make a motion that the board vote to approve the common vicular license for La Perota Incorporated, D B A, El Patron Corona. Contingent upon the payment of the license, proof of workers' compensation insurance, revenue enforcement and protection attestation. Current food permit, a successful one-ten safety inspection, state workers' compensation affidavit, business certificate if required, emergency contact form and payment of taxes.
Second.
We have a motion and a sec, and a second to approve the common vicular license. Any comments or questions? See any, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 You know, vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, they, uh, granted the vicular license. Again, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is Perry Winkle's Pub and Restaurant Incorporated, change of corporate name, like the license at, uh, two oh six Sultred Street. Um. We have all that in our packet. I would entertain a motion to approve the name change.
Okay, we make a motion that the board vote to approve the change of corporate. He muted it. We make a motion that the board vote to approve the change of corporate name for Perry Winkle's Pub and Restaurant Incorporated to J Anthony's Italian Grill and Lounge Incorporated and forward the application to the A B C C for review.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the change of corporate name for Perry Winkle's. Any comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, they are approved. We can send that off to the A B C C. All right, that leads us to our public hearing, um, for J Anthony's Italian Grill to do on some alterations of the premises. So we already opened the public hearing. Um, I would ask anybody talking on this, uh, again, to please state your name and address for the record. Um. So. So are anybody from J Anthony's here that wants to speak on this?
Um, I'm here. Gina Bellatika.
Can you just give us a quick overview? I know, I know what the uh, public notice stated and we have, uh, just kind of give us a uh, an idea what's happening.
Okay, so we're taking out the middle section of our dining room. And we're putting a bar in, uh, another bar. We're gonna, so it's only gonna be twenty-eight seats on that bar, so it's not exceeding anything.
Okay. So when I were walking your restaurant, is it that area on the right? Is that the center area you're talking about?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, cool. All right. Just curious myself. Um, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this matter? I do not see anybody. Okay, so with that, then I'd, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make that motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. It's for an affirmative, one absent, public hearing is closed.
Thank you very much.
Uh, well, we're not done yet.
Okay.
What, uh, what would we like to do about this? We have any questions or concerns?
I just have a question.
Sure.
On the paperwork, it says that the middle dining area is being converted into a full-service bar, which we just talked about and I understand, but then on the next page, it says that um, there's a thirty by forty enclosed addition in the rear of the building extended from a tiki bar with year-round side entrance.
Right.
Is that what's currently there?
Yes.
It's just reiterated what's currently there. Okay.
Yes.
That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the area in the back there.
Like the function area?
Room, right? Is that the function area? My speak.
No, that's the front bar.
Okay.
That existing bar already with the outdoor area.
Gotcha. Now I understand. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Was there alteration to that bar though for, for COVID? Was that wall opened up during COVID to allow for outdoor seating?
I don't understand what you're saying.
No, they already had no door.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Not seeing any, then I entertain a motion to approve.
I'd make a motion that the board approve the alteration of premises for J Anthony's Italian Grill and Lounge Incorporated doing business as J Anthony's Italian Grill Incorporated as written and forwarded and forwards, excuse me, the application to the A B C C for review and approval.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Now call for a vote.
Yes.
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 You know, vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, now you're approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
You're welcome. Have a good night. Thank you.
All right, now we go to, uh, it's to our next public hearing, which is the American Legion Post Alteration of Premises. We already opened the public hearing, so I would ask anybody speaking on this to please state your name and address when you are speaking. Um, so is, um, I presume it would be.
Cheryl Bailey. Cheryl Bailey.
Cheryl. Oh, there we go. Hi. Would you like to kind of give us an idea of what you're doing?
Um, yes, what we're looking to do is, um, we just wanna use the grass area on the side of our building where the hole shoot pits are as, um, we don't wanna increase our capacity. We just wanna use it so we have special functions, whether it's a chicken barbecue or um, the riders come in and they have their lu- lunch after the ride or anything. We wanna use that area as extra space. It doesn't, it's not gonna increase our capacity, just, um, giving us a little extra room. And one night on summertime and springtime, nice weather, you know, we'll be sitting outside for that, but there will always be a member um, monitoring it, so it'll never be just customers out there unattended. And no glass will be out there. It'll be all plastic cups.
Great. Thank you. Uh, is there anybody that would like to talk about this from the public? All right, not seeing any, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make that motion? Second.
And I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. It's for an affirmative, one absent, the public hearing is closed. Um, we've, we pretty much got, uh, an idea of what's going on there for board. What would we like to do?
Make a motion that the board approve the alteration of premises for the Oxford American Legion Post fifty-eight Incorporated as written and forward the application to the A B C C for review and approval.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, they are approved. Thank you very much for your patience this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is, uh, mastod land damage agreements and rights of entity.
Mister Chairman, if I, if I may, um, as you know, we have a looming multimillion dollar project, um, that, uh, is being uh, conducted, uh, by the state to make improvements basically from the Auburn Oxford line up to the Charlton line. Uh, and as a result of that, uh, they're moving the clock forward, uh, to next year. And part of the process here for Route twenty is that there are parcels of land that will be in the construction uh, right away and, um, the state is looking for the town to actually, um, grant temporary easement for roadway construction as well as to approve any, uh, land damage agreements, uh, from the Department of Transportation. Uh, in your packet, there are a number of parcels that are explained both, uh, via, um, pictorially to you in terms of, um, uh, maps and, uh, that connect, uh, to the actual lot numbers that they're, they're looking at. Uh, they've made a number of calls, uh, to my office to make sure that we move forward with this. It's, it's one of many things that will come in the future, but um, they wanna get the paperwork, uh, going for, uh, construction easements as well as agreements for any, uh, land damages.
All right.
Did I say that?
Yes.
And we do have a member of the state, if you'd like to come forward. You've been very patient. Sorry.
Yes, my name is Eric Christensen. I represent, uh, Right of Way Bureau. I generally work out of districts running too, but, uh, District Three supervisor moved to another position, so I got thrown in, thrown into this at the last minute, but, uh, I'll do my best to try and explain what's going on. Basically, you have three planes in front of you. I don't know if you see them in front of you.
Yeah.
Uh, you got one here that's, uh, it's a fifty-four South Bridge. Uh, that's a tiny little triangle fee-taking piece. And the, the purple is a taking for a wall. If you're gonna build a wall easement there. And then, of course, in back of that, we see the hay bales. That's temporary easement for our people to step off onto your property. And the next one would be that parcel oh four. There's not a designation as far as an address on it. But, uh, again, this is a large temporary easement because it's, uh, it must be a steep drop-off there grading-wise. So the hay bales are put way back to, uh, help with erosion control. And the purple that you see here is for a telephone pole guide wire that will be placed. And again, the yellow that is being taken is basically for, they're gonna have a pull-off on, on the town road. That's these two pieces together is actually for emergency pull-off area. So for me, as a problem with vehicle.
Yeah.
They can safely exit onto this property. And that's basically the continuation of fifty South Bridge is, is part of that emergency pull-off. Okay, it's a fee-taking. We take that, we maintain that, we put a guard rail for safety reasons obviously. And there is a permanent utility easement there for guide wire and a pole. And again, there's, uh, for grading purposes, a large taken. That will revert back to you. That the brown is just temporary. Okay. That'll always revert back to the town. And, uh, just as a side note, I was listening to your, uh, meetings there, uh, earlier. Uh, and I know you expressed concern about the trucks on that previous permit application. I can tell you this, for the next two years, there're gonna be a lot of police and, and, you know, the traffic's gonna be really slow to crawl, so these trucks will have a little bit easier getting in and out. Probably a lot of that dirt will go right in this, this construction project.
Oh. That'd be convenient.
I mean, that's
I was wondering about that.
Because obviously whoever wins the contract, you know, obviously they try to save money. They're gonna get the dirt as close as they can.
Sure.
And obviously, that's right. You know, you can't get no closer. So, I just want to throw that out. I don't, I'm not, I don't know these people. I'm not supporting that. I'm just
Well, that's good to know.
Just throwing that out there, because I know you spray sex. I've been on Oxford, Oxford Road, and that is, is horrible for a truck to try and pull.
It is, it is.
And with that, you know, construction going on with police officers there, obviously, it's gonna be a lot slower. A lot of traffic will fear off of that. People take that now. Once they see the traffic or the construction going, they're probably gonna take the pike or they'll take, you know, other ways. So the traffic will be somewhat reduced. It usually happens in any construction.
Any questions? Questions, sir? Should I entertain a motion?
I would make a motion that the board give permission to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division or its duly authorized agents to enter upon parcels number eleven dash T E dash two eighty-four and eleven dash T E dash eleven for temporary easement for roadway construction and eleven dash T E dash twelve grading for roadway construction in the town of Oxford in connection with the construction of a state highway as shown on plans in the office of said department at Ten Park Plaza, Boston, Massachusetts for the purpose of making changes and carrying out the work on said parcels.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to give permission to mass transportation. I would entertain that with us.
Chair has a question.
Yes, Cheryl.
Thank you. That's okay. Um, the, uh, right-of-entry forms that need to be, it's, sorry, this is the discussion portion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, so this, um, they require, it says signature of owner. Do we have to stipulate who signs that in our motion or no?
Basically, uh, the chairman of the board speaks for you, or if he wasn't here, three of the five board members.
Okay.
Suffice it.
Okay. All right, that was, that was my question.
Good question. That's a real good question. Do we want to add that stipulation?
Or the town manager, actually. Sorry. Sorry about that.
No. Well, no, no, I just
Run in a direction.
Automatically, it's land, so.
You want to go to the chairman?
I would amend the motion to let the chair sign the paperwork on behalf of the board.
I second that again.
All right. And then the other discussion. And I'll call for a vote on this motion.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent. That motion is approved. Now I think we have to approve, uh, land damage agreement.
You ready?
Yep. Yes, please.
I'd make a motion that the board approve the land damage agreements from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division as written for parcel, parcel numbers eleven dash eleven, eleven dash W dash fifteen, eleven dash nine, eleven dash P U E dash one oh seven, eleven dash P U E dash one five two, eleven dash W, W dash thirteen, eleven dash eight, eleven dash P U E dash one zero six, eleven dash P U E dash four and eleven dash ninety-nine for project number six zero two six five nine.
Very good, Megan.
Thanks. Don't ask me to do it again.
To be signed by the chair.
To be signed by the chair on behalf of the board. Thank you.
Second.
All right. That is, all right, no.
Mike has a question.
You didn't. Oh, go ahead.
I'm not sure if this, this question is out in my field or, or not, but, um, we're releasing any land damages, so when the state's all done with these properties, that's it, the state will do this, but there, there's hay bales left behind, there's huge ruts, there's
No.
that, that's all taken care of.
Correct. Whatever we do, we re-loan and re-see.
Okay.
Okay, when we sculpt the property, I will re-loan and re-see it. And, uh, our resident engineer has to sign off on that, make sure that, so, because sometimes in construction, they try to forego that, but they're, they have paid withheld.
Right.
Okay.
I just don't want that to wind up on the town to have to take care of afterwards.
Great. Any other comments or questions? And I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. Our motion two is, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and being patient.
Your patience.
Just want to know when I could accept, expect them.
We'll, we'll track him down tomorrow to get a signature. Or maybe, maybe even today, but we need to get cottons for me, right?
Actually, I can do it right now if you just wait a few minutes and we'll, uh, also we'll go right into town manager's report, correct?
Uh, one more. I think we have outdoor business permit renewal and waiver fee of the Congregational Church.
We already did that.
Did we?
Yep.
Oh, my gosh. Well, I'm so busy paying attention.
That's okay.
All right, so
You're up.
That sounds good to me. The first item on my manager's report, uh, is the Lowe's Pond Dam. AECom, uh, engineering firm has completed seventy-five percent of the design of improvements to Lowe's Pond Dam and is transitioning to permitting phase. Uh, my office has recently received an invitation, uh, to attend a joint meeting with the Department of Conservation, Recreation, um, and AECom and, um, some select town staff, like our D P W Director of Conservation and, and some others. They've also requested at least a member of the chairman and, uh, perhaps another member of the board attend. Are they looking to either have it as a virtual or they're tentatively scheduling it either June ninth or tenth? Uh, and I didn't know if, in addition to the chairman, if there was any, um, expressed interest or someone to participate in that. I just to remind the board that we're, we're partnering with the state in this unique, um, endeavor. I, I had already, uh, shared a very comprehensive, uh, executive summary from AECom. It's a almost two million dollar project that the state is taking on. Uh, and the eventual, um, outcome would be after they make all of the improvements, including a potential park on the side of the dam, uh, that will be, um, for the town, that the town would actually, um, take the dam afterwards. Uh, but we would not have to incur any costs, which is major, um, since we do have other dams that, um, the town owns that do, you know, need, uh, improvements like McKinstry Pond Dam. So, uh, one way or the other, there's improvements that need to be done to this dam and, um, the owners have long been, um, AWOL. So if, uh, somebody would like to join us in there and learn more about what they're planning, that would be terrific. Chuck, you can just, yeah, let the chairman know. Okay. Um, C M R P C, uh, Service Award. It's, uh, terrific after dealing with all of these very detailed kinds of agenda items to, um, be able to inform the board tonight that the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission has informed my office that the recipient of the distinguished twenty-twenty-one annual service award is Oxford's very own Terry Cummings. And Terry has been a contributing member to C M R P C for many years. Um, he, he's been a tremendous advocate, um, and voice for numerous planning resources and projects across Southern Worcester County, not just for Oxford. The awards dinner will be, um, this Thursday, June tenth, at Highlands Country Club in Grafton. And if there are any board members that would like to be able to be present, uh, to attend the suspicious occasion, um, you know, please let my office know and we'll make a reservation. Maybe we can go as a group. Um, Terry is very deserving of this, having been to a number of meetings at C M R P C, including ones where I've applied for grants. He's always there and, uh, and I know Dennis, um, you're very familiar with that as well, um, having been the regional delegate to Central Mass, um, planning, um, organization as well.
Mr. Chair, I'm teaching that night, but is there any way that we could give him a proclamation from the board as a thank you for the service? And one officer asked.
Demo happen, yes. I think that would be very fitting. Thank you.
Make a motion?
Well, am I allowed to make motions that aren't on the agenda?
We'll just make it. He'll put it on the agenda if you want, if you want. It's, it is on the agenda, but if you'd like.
Do we need a motion to do it or can we just do it?
Then I'm fine with it. I don't know about the rest of the board. I mean.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I think we do need a motion.
Yeah, I think so.
It's related to this agenda item, though, so that should run.
Right, yeah, that's what I was saying.
I would make a motion that we make a proclamation for Terry Cummings as a thank you for his dedicated service.
Second.
And I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes. And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent. And, um, I'm planning on going that evening, so if we can get it done by then, um, I can probably present it to them that night.
Sure.
Great. Thank you.
The next item is the, um, Oxford Community Center feasibility study. Uh, as you know, the original R F P deadline uh, was May thirteenth, uh, for the, um, request for proposals, uh, for doing, uh, okay, sorry, for doing the, uh, feasibility visioning and, um, for it to be, uh, also looked at for some future potential changes to the facility itself. We have a feasibility, uh, committee, which was kind of sidetracked during COVID, uh, but more importantly, we've been waiting, um, to see what kind of interest we'd get from firms. And we extended the deadline for submission of R F P proposals to the twentieth because we had over forty placeholders of interest that were expressed during the review period and, um, consideration of a number of firms. I'm very pleased that as of the, um, receipt of, uh, the, the, uh, actual firm proposals uh, that occurred on May twentieth, we have six firms who formally submitted their proposals. And, um, they're very lengthy and, uh, at the same time, uh, very detailed. What we are going to do with the, um, Community Center, uh, interim director and the, uh, Tony Sousa, our planning, uh, director and a number of, and Jared Duval, we're all gonna look at these reviews uh, for proposals and then, uh, make a decision and select a firm. And then the O C C feasibility committee will meet with this, uh, firm to really develop a common vision and a future proposal for the community center, um, to hopefully better meet their needs. So it's very exciting, um, and the proposals are very exciting. And they've gone from as far, or come from as far away as Chicago and Maine um, and as close as, uh, Boston and Worcester, so we have some diversity with that as well. Um, Autism Awareness Month is the next item on the agenda. Uh, the original, um, uh, Autism Awareness Month, uh, in Massachusetts has been really spearheaded by the Doug Flutie Junior Foundation. And our police department, um, had stepped up once again to demonstrate, um, its support for a very worthy cause in very visible ways. Our dispatcher, um, Stephanie Devarakis had, uh, designed T-shirts. Our retired Lieutenant, uh, Gagnor had, um, uh, created decals and, um, Ibrahim Abishoy had, uh, designed the new patches, uh, which you can see right up here. They were really beautiful for the month of, um, uh, June, which is May and June, uh, they've been wearing them. And together, those efforts, um, were able to total a donation from, uh, the P D to the Flutie Foundation of a thousand dollars. So that was great Phil and Thor work, um, on behalf of the P D. And, um, I just wanted to give a shout out to those, uh, three employees for taking that initiative. Um, Regional A C O Services. Um, I just wanted to throw this out to the board because recently our, um, Animal Control Officer Kelly Flynn and also the Charlton Town Administrator, uh, Andrew Golas, had reached out to me regarding um, their interest in Oxford considering a possible intermunicipal agreement for animal control and inspectional services with Charlton. Charlton has, um, evidently just, um, or is about to lose their animal control officer. And as you know, Kelly Flynn is from Charlton, um, but there's a lot more discussion that has to take place. This is only preliminary. Uh, but I wanted the board to know that it might be a future agenda item, um, and as I learned more from, um, the, uh, Town Administrator of Charlton and also Kelly, you know, I'll put together those thoughts for a potential, uh, future agenda item to have them here to discuss it. A town hall, con, town hall opening. I just wanted to provide an update that last, uh, week, we opened without a hitch, uh, to the new uh, public hours of operation. Um, we didn't incur any problems. Actually, we saw a lot of smiling faces. And it was great to see people coming in the building. Originally, we had the, um, customer service window available as well, but the majority of people came directly into the building for service. Uh, so, you know, I'm hoping we can continue in that vein, uh, within the building when people are walking through the hallways for staff. Staff have opted, um, to, uh, continue to wear masks for a period of a little bit longer. We do have some staff members who have, uh, family members, um, they, uh, continue to be concerned about and, um, we did retrofit any of the offices, um, to be able to be very, uh, customer-focused still, but also protective of our employees. So after June fifteenth and a little bit longer, I think people will continue to, um, feel more and more comfortable, uh, both coming in the building and also being serviced, um, by our employees. And the last item is just the Memorial Day Parade. I wanted to, um, say that the rain fortunately had stopped long enough to allow a, a fitting tribute to our veterans. I want to thank the V F W and American Legion Post for organizing the festivities uh, to the best of their abilities, um, considering it wasn't that long ago that we were talking about canceling or just doing a laying of wreaths, uh, ceremony versus a parade. And, um, I do want to acknowledge the very hard work of our parks and, and cemetery, um, both our laborers and also our, um, supervisor, Matt Benoit, for really getting everything to look fantastic. If you've been in the cemeteries, they just are beautiful, um, and he, they do such a great job in presenting that. And of course, all of the, uh, monuments, um, including the new one that was, um, put out, uh, and, uh, displayed was, was very beautiful. Um, I also want to acknowledge that Ken Donnelly, who has always been running back and forth with the logistics of a P A system while a parade is moving is no easy task. Uh, and I do want to, uh, say thank you to him as well, always. And of course, Tim Labonte and our, um, media, uh, background here is, uh, gonna put together, I think, a very beautiful compilation video that I'm certain will be able to capture the events of the day. And of course, I really like to thank speakers, both the chairman and, and the vice chairman, along with, uh, Senate, um, Representative McKenna and Representative Frost for their participation. And that would conclude our report.
Thank you. Any selection announcements, selection panel?
I'm sorry, because I know it's been a long night, but I actually do have
Yeah.
a few things. Um, a couple of quick things. I just, um, prior to this, um, I just had the pleasure of attending the N J R O T C Awards Night, um, under the tent at the high school. Um, and I just wanted to tip my hat again to them. It was a lovely ceremony. Um, they had a lot of great awards given to the, um, N J R O T C members, and, um, I just wanted to thank them for including me in their night because it was a wonderful event. Um, on the heels of that, I also, um, want to echo what Jen said, thanking the participants in the Memorial Day Parade. Um, we were very lucky to be able to hold the parade, given the state of the world. So it was a nice change to be able to honor, um, those men and women who, um, gave their lives for us. So thank you to the participants and everybody involved. It was a very nice event. Um, and then I just have a couple other technical questions. Um, it's been brought to my attention that I guess, um, Officer Aqua Frosca had requested to be on the agenda tonight. And I guess, um, it wasn't able to happen, but from what I understand, his meeting is now, um, time-sensitive. And he needs a definite, um, vote on it prior to our next meeting. I didn't know if the board would consider having a meeting prior to the fifteenth to, um, formally address the issue. I know we won't have likely a fifth member by then, but, um, out of respect for him, I didn't know if we could potentially look at our calendars and see if we could come to some sort of meeting, um, before the fifteenth to address that for him. Um, and then my next question, um, if we discuss a policy at a meeting, um, does the draft policy become a part of the minutes as well? Or is it just the discuss, discussion surrounding it that should be attached to the minutes? Anybody?
I have no idea.
Do we have a way to find out that answer? I had a resident ask me for a draft policy that we discussed that's not attached to minutes for the meeting, but the meeting minutes are posted. So I just don't know the rules on if the resident can have the policy or not, because it's not listed on the minutes, but we did discuss it as an agenda item. So I thought that the rule was that if it was discussed at a meeting, it became part of the public record, but before I overstepped, I just was looking for.
It's probably something to bring to the manager's attention, uh, later date. We really can't discuss it because it's not on the agenda, so.
Right, but I
So why don't you just?
Can we just give them a copy of the policy?
That's what my question is. Is it?
What policy was it?
So, so this is selectman announcements. If there's something more and I don't know what policy you're referring to or what part of it, that's one of the reasons why, if it's, if it's something that, um, was foreseen prior to coming to the meeting, please, you know, give me a call. We'll look into it. Um, but I, I, I don't have any clue to what we're referring to and it's not appropriate on the selectment announcement.
But if it's just a, a, should be just a general yes or no question that if we discuss something at a meeting, is it considered?
Is that an announcement? I don't, I don't think this is an announcement.
We're not allowed to ask questions anymore if it's not pertaining to a vote?
I don't.
Not on the agenda, so we can't discuss it.
Okay, so then could we put it on an agenda to discuss it, please? And could we also put it on an agenda to ask the question if we, as board members, have a say in the appropriateness of invoking the rule of necessity or if it's something that is just determined by the chair? Um, and if the rule of necessity is appropriate for personal matters or just town matters? And could we also put it on an agenda?
If you would put that in an email to me, I would be glad to see what I can do about putting those things on the agenda, yes.
Okay, and then my last thing is regarding, um, election and meeting advertisements. I didn't know where we were at with getting the TV channels, if they are running. I apologize if they're already running, but, um, getting TV channels running for an additional way of advertising when meetings are coming up. I know we just afforded money for the playback system and Tim had indicated that we would hopefully be having live streaming and whatnot coming up. So if we could put it on an agenda to get an update on that, I would appreciate it. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Selectmen will wait.
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Selectmen Davis. Thank you. The only thing I want to do is thank everybody for attending the parade yesterday. It was, uh, very nice to, uh, get out about, uh, without masks on and just being able to see people without the COVID restrictions. So it was a very nice, uh, we didn't get rained upon, so that was a good thing. So that's all I have, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion. Second.
And I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Four in affirmative, one absent. We are adjourned.